It's that simple. Mr. Hunter, time's yours.
Thanks for the few minutes today to sort of address you guys formally.
A few minutes, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought the presentation was going to be hours. It's only going to be a few minutes?
It's ours. Buckle up, everybody.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, lobbyists, we can talk, right? That's our gift.
Oh, it's okay.
You know, I think this is important because, you know, I think the public views lobbying as something different than what it actually is. And the two of you that have had experience in the legislature understand that. And Commissioner Harvey, you, I think, have developed an understanding of that over time, that a lot of lobbying over the years, especially in the public sector, has, is something that people don't understand. They think that it happens in the shadows. And so I think it's important to shed light and bring all this work to the surface because it's important work. It's important work because it impacts the voters of the county, and they ought to know what lobbyists do and what they benefit from it. So I just kind of wanted to cover some things that have happened in the past, and things that happened in the 2019 session, and things that we can expect coming up in the 2020 session. And I'll try to keep it brief. So it's been a few years since I've represented the county with the federal government and also here in the Utah Legislature. And we've dealt with getting federal dollars for flooding issues. And we've dealt with economic development and progressing that to a point now where we're thinking regionally and helping the behavioral health system here and pulling together people from all over to really infuse Weber County with new, fresh ideas on how to build the future here. What is our economy going to look like? What is our, what are roads going to look like? What do we want this place to be like 50 years from now? And the things we do now with the legislature have a huge impact on that. And I've done a lot of work on these things over the last several years, and I'm proud of what I've done, and I'm proud of all of the help that I've received from county staff and from commissioners of the past. And it's been a great experience. And it has, to me, been the joy of my lobbying career representing Weber County. I was born and raised in Ogden, and this is, this is my home, and I love representing it. Last year, well, this year, earlier this year, January, February, March in the 2019 session, it seemed like 911 issues that we dealt with, making sure that we are sort of building a sustainable future for our 911 dispatch facilities all across the state, and especially here in Weber County, was a big deal. And that was a lot of work. And focusing on where do we go with the inland port? Is Weber County a place where we can see an inland port, whether it's a satellite location or the main location for the inland port? That was a big discussion this year. And that, that is progressing in Salt Lake, and that, that port authority is having discussions. And it seems like things are a little bit slow right now. But that was a big push this year, trying to figure out where would we put that if we were to do something here? And what would that look like? And how would that impact the citizens of the county? That's, that's something that I think the legislature is still eyeing, and we can really benefit from those discussions the legislature is having. And the three of you have done an excellent job in positioning Weber County as an alternative and even the best site in the state for that. Tax reform was something that sort of got off the ground for a minute and then hit the ground with a thud. The legislature really tried to figure out how to restructure the tax code in a way that would benefit all the citizens of the state. And without raising revenues and without inserting new taxes into the system, they wanted to make sure everything was balanced. And that's a, that's a, that's a tough thing to do, and that takes a long time. And counties are going to be heavily impacted on that. And I think the legislature made a wise choice in deciding to take some time to have these town hall meetings up and down the state and engage with local businesses and communities and figure out, okay, what's our next step here as we want to restructure this tax code? And I think they're well on their way to figuring that out, and we'll see a lot more action on that this session, I think. Coming up for 2020, there is going to be a, some sort of bonding package. It is, is going to be hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars. And that is something in the county that I will be making sure that we are a part of. We have some projects here that, that deserve state attention, that I think we feel like we've worked for the, over the years on focusing the legislature's attentions on northern Utah infrastructure. We have missed out on some things in the past, but I think we're positioned now to really get the citizens what they need to help their commutes improve and to help their way of life improve in general. If you look at the freeways in the south end of the Wasatch Front versus the north end of the Wasatch Front, there's a difference. And we've fought long and hard over the last few years on trying to, to raise the attention level and focus here. And this, and this bonding package that I think the legislature is going to propose is a, is a key time for us to really move the ball on, on, on northern Utah roads, particularly I-84 interchange, the 5600 interchange by the base. Those are going to be two big projects that hopefully get some attention in this bonding There's going to be a bill about, about property tax increasing based on inflation, and there may be some potential there to have a little bit more ease with local governments' ability to have just property tax naturally increased with inflation rather than go through truth in taxation. Now, I know that that could be a controversial thing in the legislature, and that's something that we got to talk about, but that's going to be a big issue this year. That's going to be something that's presented in the legislature, and we've got to, we've got to be ready for that discussion. There will be a bill on this personal property for government use. Representative Hall ran last year that I think you were well versed on, Commissioner Jenkins. That is going to come up again, and some fixes to that are in play. And so that's something that we're going to keep an eye on. There's going to be more flexibility allowed in a piece of legislation on how our transient room tax dollars are spent. Right now, it's mandated that 47% be used on tourism and, and parks, and there's some discussion that maybe that 47% threshold ought to be lowered. So there's that looming. There's some public safety retirement tweaks that are going to come, which is going to have a heavy, heavy impact on our sheriff's department. And potentially, there's some talk of having the use of our fourth quarter as, as we impose that, portion of that would qualify for state matching funds. So we could, we could pull down some extra state dollars in conjunction with the use of our fourth quarter. So there's, there's a lot of stuff coming up in this, this 2020 session. And I feel like with the three of you and the team you've got here, we're positioned to do some really incredible things for Weber County, things that haven't been done in decades here. And I'm, I'm just honored to be a part of it, and I'm grateful to do the work that I do and, and hope to keep doing it. That's it. If you guys have any questions or want to talk about anything, I'm happy to.
Commissioners, either of you care to say anything or ask questions? Commissioner Forre?
Let me just have you verify something for me. So I had a discussion with Senator Jerry Stevenson this last week. He indicated that the revenue prospects were looking good. So what is your take? What have you heard from, on the revenue? Obviously, we know that that's the, always the big one to determine how much money will be available at the end of the year. So what's your?
Yeah, I've heard exactly that, that revenues are expected to be positive again this year.
How much?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly what they're, what they're expecting. I've just heard that it's going to be more than they have expected in the past. And, and in conjunction with that, there's the, there's the idea that they've been socking money away for a long time, and this might be a positive year where they don't need to put as much money away as they have in the past. And so, and last year, you know, everything was on hold because of the tax reform discussion. A lot of things were not funded. And what they're requiring everybody to do now, that, that received appropriations dollars for their projects or their institutions, all of the ongoing and the one-time money is going to be treated the same. So everybody has to go get in line and propose the worthiness of their cause to the legislature again this year. And so that, what that's going to do is that's going to allow them to reorganize where they're appropriating funds and who they're appropriating funds to. And I think that's going to be kind of a positive process. I mean, it'll be a stressful, strenuous process for these guys, but with the extra revenues, I think we'll, we'll see some, some real benefits in that.
So just so you know, he indicated that we have probably a pretty good opportunity to take our EDC Utah funds that we were allocated last year and make those ongoing. So we definitely need to make sure that you're on top of that and...
Which was around $300,000.
$300,000 was the number that we talked about, that I talked about with Senator.
Yep.
So we want to make sure that you're aware of that. Any, any opportunity you have to talk to PROPS chairs and others, that we need to make sure that that message gets sent out, this is, that's as important as infrastructure for northern Utah.
Absolutely. Yeah.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Harvey?
Just thank you, Commissioner. You know, I appreciate in your presentation very much, one, the things that you have done. You have the ability to work, especially with Commissioner Forre, Commissioner Jenkins, who have the, I think, a very good relationship with the other senators and legislators that are currently on the hill. They're, they're trusted. These two men are trusted along with you. You, you have a great reputation of being honest and fair, but not self-serving, and I respect and appreciate that. You brought up key things for me that are really important. The I-80, 84, 89 interchange, because currently that project, the 89 project wasn't funded beyond the Weber River. As I watch that traffic almost every day and watch the three counties, Davis, Weber, and Morgan Counties affected with that, from the backing up to the hill on 89, and many times that's backed up right there at that point, clear past Lagoon. The other day, it was backed up from that point going east from 89, clear to the Adams Avenue toll road. Coming down the canyon on, on 84 wasn't backed up, but coming down the hill from Ogden, trying to leave, was backed up to the Catholic Church or manor care out there. And every day, that happens. Everyone is inconvenienced, and you can almost set your watch to the backing up of traffic around Kay'sville or Farmington coming north into, into Weber County. And yeah, they're working on that now, but that's, we just added the Northrop Grumman, who'll have 2,800 more jobs immediately added to the 5600 interchange, which takes me to that, which is already above capacity use for 5600 and I-15, and especially going west. And they'll also need to be, not just the transit from east to west in our county, but also along a western route. The legacy highway, as it's been called, or the West Davis Corridor, West Weber Corridor, North Davis, whatever you want to call it, we know that that's moving along. The state's approved the 24th Street interchange here that started in, at 2022. We, we are growing. The nice thing, what does that mean to the people of Weber County? According to Scott Park, their taxes, we don't need to, we, there's not even a bleep on the radar as far as affecting their property tax from the Weber County general fund side for another five years, at least another five years. So we're healthy that way. But we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure so that people can enjoy their health in their homes and not in their vehicles. And so that's a big, that's a big piece for me. We appreciate, mental health is a huge concern. You've addressed that, and we'll continue to do that with Commissioner Forre and Jenkins, leading with our Center of Prosperity, or Center of Excellence. And that's a combination of tying in with the Human Services and the Health Department. And so those are things that are right now at the top of my list of the things that have importance. And as long as we continue to focus on that, I think it'll benefit all the citizens who live here in Weber County. So just as, as the center of the target, that's where I want to stay focused, those things.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner. So Steve, you know, when Commissioner Forre and I came in, you kind of had a target on your back. We, we really wondered if we wanted to keep the lobbyists. This last year, we had what I would say was one of the best legislative years we've ever had down there. We were absolutely swamped, Commissioner Forre and I. We became in, involved in UAC's drive for issues for the county, and we both lobbied. Well, I was three and one time four, and there was one time you were there every day We were, we were really busy at the legislature last year. And when we hit the end of the session and we looked back, we could count wins on everything we went after except one item. And so I really thought it was a wonderful, successful year down there. And between the three of us, we really did a good job. So we thank you for that. And of course, we felt good enough that in the end, we renewed your contract. And that's what you care about, right?
That's what he's for.
Yeah, well, I, that's, the lobbyist in me would say, yeah, of course, that's what I care about, you know? But look, I'm a Weber County boy, and this is, this is such a big deal to me to represent this county, and I love doing it. And it is, I do feel like this last session was, was a big deal for us. This one's going to have the potential to be exponentially more important.
I agree with that. So one thing I do want to men, mention, I appreciate Commissioner Harvey's comments. And I want to mention that this tax reform, you know, it's interesting watching this. It's gone full circle now, and now they're coming back. Enough businesses have pushed back that they're really having questions on whether they want to tax services or not. And I got a letter from the Taxpayers Association the other day where they started pushing back and said, look, what we ought to do is go back and fix a few of the mistakes we made. One of the mistakes we made was we took sales tax off food. And I was involved in that, as Commissioner Forre, Forre was. And at the time, that's a little bit of a regressive tax, and we went out of our way to try to help people by taking 2% of that off. But it's also the flattest tax, and it's the tax that we can eat most easily budget to. And so I tend to agree, now that it's all said and done and we're back there, I think we ought to forget all this that they're doing and go back to putting sales tax on food. And if we need to make some other arrangements in there, we can do that. But that, that flattens that out, and I, that's just where I think we need to go. So I'm passing that along to you.
That's good to know.
Yeah, that's where I feel pretty strong about that. That seems to be the direction to go. I really liked the comments that the Taxpayers Association has come up with in this. If you haven't read them, you ought to get their official white paper. In fact, I've got a copy of it upstairs if you want it.
Well, I, yeah, I've got, I've got it from Howard.
Yeah, okay, you know it then.
Yeah, it's important for, to, I think the voice that they have is always about simplify, right? I mean, citizens ought to know where their taxes are going and how much they're paying. And right now, I, I mean, how much of the population can articulate, you know, oh, you put the sales tax back on food, how much would it be? You know, they don't know that it's 2%. I mean, those kind of things ought to be communicated, and that's important.
That's true. They don't. In fact, we've gone out of our way with Commissioner Harvey's effort this year to put a graph on our tax notices so people will understand very clearly and succinctly where their taxes go and who's levying a tax on them. And it's turned out to be pretty good. We're excited to see what the people think of their tax notice. Well, I said that a little funny. We know what they think of. They think the same thing I think. I hate that thing.
Wadded up and thrown in the trash can.
That's right. But their understanding of it should be much easier this year.
Yeah. Well, this property tax issue is going to be a big deal, and I think that it's something that we ought to weigh in on heavily soon and figure out where we are on it. Because if they're going to attach property tax to inflation, that, that's a new concept for a lot of us, rather than going half to deal with crisis mode of raising property taxes here and there. That's, that's a debate we're going to have to have as a state, and we ought to, we ought to lead out on it, so.
Well, so you know, I like the idea that we have to have truth in taxation hearings to raise taxes. I like that. Many elected officials hate the hearings, they get very contentious, and I understand that. But I like it because it gives people a chance to come in and understand the process, understand what's happening, weigh in, be involved. And that's one of the few times where you feel like you can be intricately involved with what your government agency is doing. And so I don't mind that at all, even though it's a little tough. I've been through many of them as a, as a city councilman and a mayor, and you know, those are tough times, I admit it. But they should be tough. When you raise taxes, it should be, not be easy to do. And so I feel pretty good about that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
All right, well, we appreciate you enough that, like I say, we decided to renew, and hopefully between the three of us, we'll have a good, the four of us with Commissioner Harvey, we'll have another great year down there this year and be heavily involved down there. We, we look forward to working with you again. Thank you for this report.
Yeah, I, just one last thing. You know, it's important to recognize, I think there are several people in the county that do a lot of work down at UAC. I know Ricky is one, and there's, this is a darn good county at, at maintaining legislative relationships and doing the work down there. And so it goes, it goes way beyond the three commissioners and the lobbyists. It's, and so I think it's important to point that out, that everybody, you know, what John Ullivary has done, and I mean, there is just, go down the list, everyone here has done a great job with the legislature. So anyway, thanks for the time, appreciate it.
You bet, thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I hope there was no offense taken there, Ricky, by not mentioning you. You and John do do a tremendous job down there. You represent us very well, and I kind of passed over you there, I apologize. Very good. All right, we will now go to our consent items. Item F, F1, approval of warrants 1999 through 2011 and 442686 through 442852 in the amount of $1,556,793. F2 is a request for purchase orders in the amount of $73,507. F3 is a request for approval of minutes on September 3rd. F4 is a request for approval of retirement agreement by and between Weber County and Kelly Craigan. F5 is a request for approval of ramp contracts by and between Weber County and the following individuals. Community outreach concerts is Next Symbol, and Next Symbol, a mall, a mall and the night visitors. Ogden City is intercity playground enhancements, and Ogden City's city, city restaurants and pavilion enhancements. These are items that were awarded by the ramp committee, and we're just simply approving them. Questions, commissioners, on any of these? Ricky, do you want to go over the warrants?
Love to. First off, we issued 18 purchase orders for $74,000. 28% of that amount, or $21,000, is for the library, which will go towards purchasing audiovisual materials, book trucks, and some parking lot lights. 20% or $15,000 is for our IT department, which will go towards purchasing software maintenance. 16% or $12,000 is for the Golden Spike Event Center, which will be used to purchase concessions. 13% or $10,000 is for the jail, which will go towards purchasing inmate supplies as well as some repairs to windows. As far as checks, we issued 178 checks for $1.6 million. Half that amount, or $776,000, is for health insurance for employees and retirees. 14% or $216,000 is the ramp awards that you just talked about, mostly going to Ogden City this time. And then 7% or $115,000 is for the Golden Spike Event Center, and that was for industrial fans out at the actual Golden Spike to improve the ventilation and temperature in there. That's it.
Thank you. So you answered one of my questions. We didn't have a chance to sit down like we normally do. So I had one other question, and that is Economic Development Corporation of Utah, $75,000. This is part of the $300,000 that they got from the legislature, right?
Well, that's, that's our contribution.
Yeah, that's our portion of it.
That's our portion.
So not, not the part that came from the legislature, it's our portion.
In that, I wanted to make sure...
That's correct.
Did we ever get the legislative dollars? I know it was approved, and it was said it was being processed. Did they actually ever hit?
I'll check and see if that's been deposited.
Yeah, would you?
You're talking about the legislative money?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I can answer that question for you.
Can you?
So I actually met with GOED last spring at the time. So the money, the money was appropriated to GOED through the appropriations process. We made, and then EDC Utah Theresa, at that time, myself, sat down with GOED and made the determination that that money in entirety would be transferred to EDC Utah under our name, under Northern Davis. So they, so EDC Utah is holding that money.
Right.
But they can, the stipulation in the agreement that we had with EDC Utah was that that could only be released, or they'd only release dollars for certain issues or initiatives based upon the two commissions' approval. So that money has been...
So I don't know that it'll come through us.
It's not that, no. So that money was a direct transfer to EDC Utah.
That's right. Which it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I remember that now. You'd had that discussion before, and I'd forgot.
And then just as a reminder, so we have, we have, just as we've done in the past, Weber and Davis both have their separate dues that we, and that's part of the $75,000 in addition to the $300,000. So we still pay our EDC Utah dues like we've done in the past.
Great.
Does that answer your question?
You bet it does. Thank you. I'd forgot that, Commissioner, and I thank you for reminding me of that. By the way, so far, as we've looked at that, the activity level has rose four or five times from where it was. We are getting all kinds of requests. We've fulfilled replies on all of them, and Chris is doing a great job as far as I can see. Wouldn't you agree with that?
Absolutely. And I've said this before in public meetings and private, is that we hit a home run, and I say we, northern Utah, when Chris agreed to take this on. To bring somebody up to his level of speed with the contacts he has would have taken a year to 18 months, easily.
Right.
And, and maybe we never would have achieved it. So we, we've really hit a home run with this, with him taking the helm on this and with our economic development team here in the county, combined with Davis County. They're, they're working hard. They're making a lot of contacts that have never been made.
I agree with that. Well, and he's brought enough in, there's enough activity there right now. For the first time, I actually think that maybe Hall is having a little trouble keeping up with it all, because she is going all the time.
Chris is working her hard, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Makes me happy.
You know, the, the one thing I want to comment after this whole process over the last 24, 26 months is that I didn't, admittedly, I didn't have the ability to understand just how effective our commission, and especially Commissioner Jenkins, I think you'd agree with me on this, how effective Commissioner Forre has been to represent Weber County in this. His, his expertise and his decades of, of his profession, what he's done has really lent itself to positively affect our county, and it's been really, really good for us.
I agree with that.
Thank you. I think we're, you know, this is going to be a... Thank you. I think we're, you know, this is going to be a benefit to the county, county residents, our kids and grandkids, as we give them opportunities to have jobs, good jobs, here in Weber and Davis County.
Good jobs.
But I appreciate Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Jenkins, your support, as we talked about this through the first of the year, and having faith that we could move the ball forward on this, which obviously I think we have.
Oh, great.
Appreciate your support.
You bet. All right. Next item, we're going to go into the action items. First one, G1 is a request for approval of a final reading of an ordinance establishing a weed control board.
Did we have a motion on that?
We didn't have a motion.
That's true. I didn't do that.
I'd move to approve the consent items, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and apologize for missing that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Very good. Let's go to G1 now.
Can I?
Yeah.
Pause for a second.
Uh huh.
Sorry. I think that thought just kind of got in my mind, but, you know, I hope all of you respect what you've heard. Commissioner Jenkins, I apologize for that. He recognizes where he's gone wrong and takes responsibility. And I think that's fantastic. You know, 18 months ago, I had no idea what we'd be getting with him.
Oh, man.
Well, and if you watch any of his videos, I was scared to death. But he's a man that cares, and he's a man that, he does accept responsibility for his actions. And he's not always right, but he's really, really, really smart. And when he sees things like this, that doesn't always happen. That doesn't happen in any other place you go, in these council meetings, or these other commission meetings across the straight, this state. I just really appreciate that. It's good for me. And so I wanted to just mention that. It's just a thought that's rolling into my head, and I appreciate that. So you're good. As far as I'm concerned, you keep doing what you're doing. You're a great chair.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
I appreciate that. All right, back to G1. Request for approval of final reading of an ordinance establishing the weed control board in Weber County. Mr. Wilkinson, how are you?
Doing well, thank you, Commissioners.
Good.
Good morning.
Morning, yours.
Commissioners, last week, I was here for the first reading of this ordinance. There have been no changes, but I do have Cortland Erickson, who is the author of the ordinance. Appreciate all his work on this. Taylor Christensen, our weed supervisor, and Joe Hadley, his supervisor, here today, if you have any questions at all about this.
Commissioners, any questions?
Was there anything that's, that's public, anything from the public that's questioned it, that's come to you? I...
I haven't heard anything. I have heard some interest from those that would like to apply for the board. And as an update, I talked to Stacy, who talked to Cortland, after the decision today. If it's approved, then we can advertise for those board positions.
Yeah, and that's my understanding. I've also had, oh, two or three emails from people that have expressed an interest in serving, so, and that's in Stacy's ballpark to get that going here before too long, assuming we get this thing passed today.
That's right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion if...
I'm ready to receive one.
I'll make a motion that we accept the final reading, or item G1, as the final reading of the Weber Control Board Ordinance Title 46, Noxious Weed Control.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Orderance 18.
Hold on a second. Before I call you, I want you to know that I'm the only one here that's taxed and received a ticket for noxious weeds before. And I'm supporting this, and I want you to know. Okay, Fatima.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Very good at passing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. We appreciate you. All right, you're up next, too. It says, "Request for Approval Contract Binding Weaver County, Matt Goff, Melissa Harrison, and Dale Satterthwaite and Kerry Wallen to Assist in Paving 7900 East Up in the Upper Valley, Burley Lane."
Thank you. As with the last item, I'm up here presenting, but I can't take credit for the work that has been done. Joe Hadley has been the man who has worked on this and gotten us to this point. We are going to be paving Burley Lane up in the valley. These four citizens who live on Burley Lane are helping contribute to the cost of paving that road. They had approached the county about doing this. They've now put money up front, and we're getting that work done. It started right now, and we hope to pave very soon.
I appreciate that. This is a chance for the public to help contribute, and it'll be a great thing for Weber County with ongoing maintenance. This has been something that's been underway for nearly, well, more than a year. And so it's worked out, and I think it'll work out good for, I don't know how it'll work out for them. I think good. They're supporting it. But it'll work out good for Weber County. It'll be good for the taxpayers of Weber County.
Yes.
So I'm in support of this, Mr. Chair, and would be, I would be willing to make a motion when you're ready to receive it.
Okay, let me, before we get to that point, I think it's time to have a little bit of an explanation of this from the commissioner's point of view. We had citizens approach us that are on this road, and they said, "Look," they were pushing to see if we would asphalt this, and we didn't have the money to do it. And they said, "We would be willing to put our cash in if it would help seed that project and allow you to do it." Well, when we looked at that, we says we would need about this amount, and they, between a bunch of them, got together and they came up with that amount, said, "Okay, we can do that." So I want to make a couple of things clear here. We decided to do that as a group, well, we decided to do that, Commissioner Harvey and myself primarily. Commissioner Faur has a conflict up there, so he's really set out for this whole thing because of his conflict. And he didn't necessarily want it. But we felt like it was a good opportunity for us to leverage dollars and finish that road. Now...
Substandard road.
Mm-hmm. We worry about others coming forward and saying, "Why did you do that road? Is it because Commissioner Faur is at the end of it?" And of course, the answer's no, had nothing to do with him. But the answer also would be, "If you want to put money towards your road, we'll certainly consider it." Because we want to increase all the roads we can and the quality of them, and where we can afford to do it, we want to do it.
I want to make a point. When we're talking about roads, we're talking about substandard roads that exist in this county. And so if, quite frankly, if those who want to see an improvement of a substandard road want to put in for that in the county, we have a list of our substandard roads in the county. When private enterprise wants to participate in government, we think that everyone can win, and this is an example of that.
Correct.
And they're participating quite generously. So for any of others that want to increase a substandard road, we have a very comprehensive list that's now, for the first time, been put together. And I commend you and your team for doing that. We're prepared on that. So I appreciate the work that's gone into that.
Thank you. And Commissioner, if I may, just echo what you said. These discussions have been going on since the middle of 2018, long before Commissioner Faur was in the commission seat or even involved in any of this. So I just want that to be very clear.
And I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that Commissioner Faur was not directly involved in any of this.
Correct.
And was, not only was not a willing participant, he even didn't like it.
That is true.
Yeah, that's, and I appreciate those comments. You know, I debated whether to declare a potential conflict with accepting the money. Obviously, I don't see a conflict with accepting this money, because that's coming from private citizens toward this road. But, you know, the issue has been pointed out very clear. This is a road that actually I take to get to my residence. It's not the street that, a private road that I live on, but I do take this road, just like other roads in the county. It's a road that I've actually driven on for over 50 years, on and off, because it went to one of our original farms. So I, when this first came up with some of my neighbors, as, over the past several years, myself and most of my family that lives on that, in that area, were opposed to it, because we've been used to the gravel road. We're still concerned, are concerned, about the potential speed impacts of the pavement. When that initially came up with the neighborhood vote, I was a no vote to pave it, basically for the reason for speed and safety. We've taken account of some of those safety issues by widening the part of the hill that was a concern. And then if you look at the numbers that were pointed out to me by Dr. Harrison and his wife, that road is plowed by the county, a snowplow that's maintained in the summer, which usually includes two, if not three, gradings with brine, which is very expensive. So I'm looking at the numbers, and especially with the dollar input from my neighbors for this road, it makes economic sense for the county. So I'd leave it at that.
Very good.
May I just say one more thing?
Yes.
So Commissioners, we were fortunate to be able to work with the property owners in this case, but we did not expand the road to make it conforming or anything like that. This is still a substandard road. We're just improving the surface and some of the safety issues here. So this is not comparable...
Good point.
...to other roads in the county. For instance, 3600 West, which you've been dealing with out west, this is a different situation. So I just wanted to make that clear.
That's right.
Very good.
That's a good point.
Thank you. All right. With that, Commissioner Harvey, would you like to make a motion?
I will, Mr. Chair. I request, I will make a motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Matthew Goff, Melissa Harrison, Dale Satterthwaite, and Kerry Wallen to assist in paving over the top of 7900 East of Burley Lane.
Very good. And I will second that, to make sure that Commissioner Harvey, or Faur doesn't have a conflict.
Yep.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. It passes. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, number three is a request for final reading of an ordinance related to the indigent dead. Jason Horn.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
So last week, went over the first reading of this ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, that pertains to the indigent dead. Are there any questions? Nothing's changed since then, so.
Well, I'm willing to put this to bed. I want to, that's right. I want to bury this thing if you don't. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
I'm very aware of this.
I'm comfortable with it. I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the final reading of the ordinance relating to the indigent dead.
Very good.
And I'll second that.
And I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's a roll call.
That's a roll call. Good night. Fatima, give me the sheet right there.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins.
Aye. Thank you.
Jason, we appreciate that. All right. Number four is a request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and the State of Utah Motor Vehicle Division. Line Weber County to assess to the state vehicle registration system, access to the state of vehicle registration system. Kyle Nyland.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. So this is a pretty simple agreement between Weber County and the State of Utah, the Motor Vehicle Division. So what this contract does is give us access to their system for registering vehicles, printing out registrations, renewing our unmarked vehicles to give them the month stickers and year stickers. So we actually had this a couple years ago. Probably three years ago, I met with the state and got enrolled in this program. At that time, they didn't have an agreement or a contract. They just gave us access to their system. So I've been using this, like I said, for about three years. But just a few weeks ago, they came up with an agreement, just outlining a few of the, what they're going to provide and what we're going to provide. And it's pretty simple. Like I said, it's just a web-based program that we have a login, that we just log in and use their system. So that's all it's asking us to provide, is internet access and some security systems that we already have in set with our IT department. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Commissioners?
Are there any potential liabilities with this?
No, there's not. I've read the contract, and like I said, our IT system is, has all the firewalls and safety measures put in place through requirements. So we do hold inventory. We have year decals that's in inventory, but they're locked up in a filing cabinet. So...
And that complies with any audits that have been...
Correct.
Great. You know, Commissioners, I want to just quickly comment that Mr. Nyland, along with Joe Hadley and Mr. Wilkinson in that department, there's a distinct change that's happened in the last couple of years. We used to have to register these vehicles with the county every year. And the big part, it wasn't just the, you know, it wasn't the money part, but it was the time, the time and the energy, not just with Kyle's department, but all the other departments that have vehicles that took. And we've shaved how many hours off now annually, Kyle?
Probably 200 easily.
It's 200 hours that county taxpayers were having to pay that we no longer have to pay. That's significant, when you add an ongoing savings. And so I compliment you. This is just another thing to help us be more efficient, be better stewards. And so I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
You in support enough to make a motion?
I'd be just tickled to make that motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and the State of Utah Motor Vehicle Division, allowing Weber County access to the state vehicle registration system.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. Kyle, it's approved.
Thank you.
Next item is a request for approval to ratify contract binding between Weber County and Brady Christensen for announcing the horse poles at the 2019 Weber County Fair. So I don't see Ashton Wilson here.
No, I apologize.
So it must be Duncan also.
So this is a ratification of the contract. We had the horse poles at the fair, and the announcer that we had a contract with backed out within a day or two of the fair. And so Mr. Christensen was willing and able and did a great job. And so this is just to ratify the contract to him.
Questions, Commissioner?
He really did a good job. You know, I wondered why the announcer wasn't the same one. Wes has been such a good guy over the years, but I think Brady did a wonderful job there. That's my favorite thing of the fair, these horse poles. These are great.
You don't have that inside that arena, the indoors instead of the outdoors, was just fine.
Yeah.
Worked out very well.
Yeah, it did. It worked out.
The new fans made a difference inside there. It wasn't near as air movement. It worked out well. It was a good show.
Those fans were only going at 25%. They had to set them and hold them. They couldn't, they could have set them at a higher, but then it would have just constantly been going higher. Now that they've come in and finished the fans, it's going to be even better next year. It's awesome.
But we did notice, this little technical, but we did notice that once that dries that bed out a little, and then that little dust gets elevated in the air.
Yeah.
So that's something you're going to have to be careful of.
It's going to be perfecting that science, because watering that arena, it's a challenge anyways, especially during the winter. But we've been working on some things. So hopefully we'll have it dialed in by next year for sure.
Ah, you've done really good there, Duncan.
Thank you.
Very good. So how about a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Brady Christensen for the announcing of the horse poles of the, well, it's a ratification for the Horse Poles 2019 Fair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 It's done. Next is a request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Edge Products for the Weekend on the Edge event to be held at Golden Spike Arena. Once again, Duncan.
Yeah, we're really excited about this. Weekend on the Edge was with us a couple years ago, and they went out to the Rocky Mountain Raceway last year. And things have kind of went upside down there. So they wanted to come back to us. And so this is really just a trade in sponsorship. We become one of their title sponsors, and we give them some discounts on our arena.
Very good.
Thank you. I'd move to approve the contract between Weber County and Edge Products for the Weekend on the Edge event to be held at Golden Spike Event Center.
Second. Very good. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
It's approved. You bet. Thank you, Duncan. We appreciate all you do out there. Commissioner comments? Either of you wish to say anything?
I think I'm good.
I think that's enough.
It's been a good, it's been a good meeting.
It has been a good meeting. Pretty quick. We have other things going that ties it up for the rest of the day, so we moved this ahead, and we once again apologize... up for the rest of the day, so we moved this ahead. And we once again apologize to the public for getting outside of our normal hours, but next week, we'll be back to where we should be. It's very good. All right. With that in mind, how about a motion to close the meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we move or close this meeting and go into a closed session to relating to pending or imminent litigation.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
This meeting's now closed.
Paused.
Paused.